Well, it's yeah, they used to have. They used to have.
I did. Cause I did. Same.
Yeah. It was a few years ago. It was a blueberry. I don't know. It's everything. And it's kind of seventeen. It's a little. It's a little.
No, no, no.
We got back from our first get. It's one of the. I guess it lost its.
Is he still so?
He has one little goat.
It's like.
It's like.
I guess. If it's still.
Yeah. One. We can pick out a lot.
Oh, there. I mean, they're hilarious. But it's like. And we are for you.
It's like. I remember. Those months. They still. Side of the way. Things. He had a best. He had a best.
Back up.
Of course. Of course.
I am.
I have. 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 I'd like to know your perspective on that.
There's a little history there.
All that. If you go back three. Sorry, so we're on.
Okay. Good evening. The City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 20th will come to order. Let the record show that all commissioners are present and accounted for except for Commissioners Clark and Stedman, who are absent and excused. Are there any non-agenda comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, we do have minutes to approve, the minutes of October 14th, 2015. Is there any discussion with regards to the minutes?
Motion to approve the October 14th, 2015 minutes as included in our packet.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. For new business, we are going to take a moment and determine the Planning Commission participants at the upcoming February 9th City Council Joint Study Session regarding clustering as a code amendment. Is there any discussion to this particular topic? I know that several of you have expressed an interest in going. Several of you have said you might go, you might not go. So my understanding is Commissioner Cecil was on the, you could be there.
I'm the rookie of the group, so I'll defer this time around.
All right.
I'd love to participate, but certainly behind line and behind the line if you guys.
All right. And I believe Commissioner Stedman is in the same position of either be there or not be there. So Commissioner Villett and Cabe, you would like to be there.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And I know Commissioner Clark would like to be there and I, as chairman, I think I should be there. So I, so if there's without objection, we'll, I don't know if we need a motion, but let's go ahead and have.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion for the, let's have commissioners.
I would move that we have four members participate in the study session, and that would be Chair Booth, Commissioner Cabe, Commissioner Villett.
Villett?
Villett.
Villett. Villett and Commissioner Clark.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. The only thing I would add for that is that if one of us, they had requested only three, if one of us needs to be an alternate, we can decide that. I, I'm happy to be the alternate if need be.
Okay. What I'll need to do is I'll have, need to check and see if there's time to provide public notice because with four of you attending, that is a quorum and, and we would need to notice that. So if that is a problem, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay. If that's of notice, a problem, let us know. But at this point, that's what we'd like to do would be the four of us to go. Thank you. All right. With that done, we will move to the main topic of this evening, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing with regards to the 2015 Docket of Plan and Code Amendment, South Riverside Plan and Code Amendments, Wayneeta, Simons, Norway Hill Subregion. We do have members of the public here and we're grateful, thank you all for coming. So be prepared for those of you that would like to come up and speak. You will have that opportunity to. We appreciate it very much. I believe staff has a small presentation that they'll give that we will kick this off with and then we'll open it up to the public.
Okay. Thank you, yes. And, and this should be a brief presentation. It'll also look familiar, but, but I'm going to add some, some new twists to the familiar looking slides. First thing I'm going to add is a, an exhibit. This is Exhibit WS 41, an email from William Parcell that I received today. So this is a continued hearing on the South Riverside Plan and Code Amendments, continued from December 16th. This is a plan and code amendment that was initiated as part of the 2015 Periodic Plan and Code Update by Rob Furman, who requested a rezone from 90, R 9600 to R 7200 on his two parcels in the yellow dash line here. We recommended applying that to the entire R 9600 area between the specialized senior housing overlay on the west and I 405 on the east, but eventually recommended deferring consideration until after the plan and code update. Planning Commission and subsequently City Council chose to go ahead with the, the rezone on the two initial parcels, deferring consideration of the larger rezone. The proponents suggested when it got to council to add, to expand the, the specialized senior housing overlay to include at least their properties, but that was also deferred. And now the proponents have requested to, to defer it further, to, to not take action on that at this time, which is what the staff recommendation has been. So I'll get to that a little bit more later. Again, just real quickly to, to give a little bit of the character of the area that you're familiar with by now. The issues are, there's basically been five issues, expanding, expansion of the R 9600 to R 7200 rezone, expansion of the SSHO, traffic has been raised as an issue and addressed, landslide and other environmental issues have been raised and, and addressed, and affordable housing requirements or incentives as part of any rezone action have been addressed in the last couple of hearings, and we'll hear some more about that tonight. So just to, again, to recap, the analysis, basically in terms of the capacity analysis, basically subtracted out the, the very steep slopes and the wetland areas and stream areas and their buffers to determine, to estimate the, the buildable land area and then applied the, the zoning requirements for R 7200 to, to determine how many additional units. And it, it comes to an additional 15 units, 37 units with R 9650, 52 with R 7200. And our recommendation is to expand that, remains to expand that rezone to that entire R 9600 area. As for the SSHO expansion, as I said, the, the Furmans have requested deferral of that, but since that, the packet went out, I have heard from a couple of property or from a property owner in the, whose property is within the, the quarter mile radius, asking if, if that property could still be considered for an expansion of the SSHO. The, then that would be this property just to the east of the existing SSHO. Staff's recommendation is to, to not even do small tweaks to the SSHO. Fire Marshal has weighed in on that. The, the analysis is that this parcel could house a specialized senior housing facility similar to Riverside East here, actually a little bit bigger than that, as many as 48, 48 to 70 units, and the fire department remains concerned about any expansion in the SSHO, given the emergency service response concerns that they've included in their earlier memo. So that could potentially apply without making any plan amendment to that quarter mile radius policy direction, but we think that should be part of the bigger citywide look at senior housing and, and, and also further look into the emergency services issue. Here we have the email from Apollo Furman requesting that the SSHO and any SSHO affordable provisions be, be deferred. And so we, we continue with that, our, our recommendation as I, as I stated. Traffic, really nothing new here. This is the, the memo that was based on the R 9600 to R 7200 rezone, along with the other rezones that were, that were a part of the periodic plan and code update, indicating that, as we've discussed, the, the majority of the traffic that creates the bottlenecks on East Riverside Drive is not, not originating from that area and the, the small increase in population there would have a, wouldn't have a significant impact on the traffic. I've been saying this for the last few times, that, that I keep checking with our, our traffic manager and on the info, information on the I 405 tolling and whether that's creating additional cut through traffic on East Riverside. The initial reports are showing that there isn't an increase in 2015, October of 2015 over the, the traffic in 2014, but that's just a few weeks after that tolling happened. He really feels like we won't know until we get counts for, for this year to really get a, a good gauge on that. His sense is that there's not a, a huge impact on that corridor, but, but it's too early to tell. In any case, we feel that the proposed rezone isn't, is not a significant traffic impact. And then again, just to recap, we've, we've touched on landslide and other environmental issues with, which were raised. Our recommendation for, is that there's no need to make any code changes that our current critical areas code provides, which is much more robust than, than it was for most of the development that happened, has happened along this, in this area, that that does provide adequate protection for these issues. And then I think probably the majority of the discussion tonight will center on affordable housing. At the November 18th hearing, we, we got a general presentation from Arch, Regional Coalition for Housing on affordable housing options, including approaches used by surrounding jurisdictions, which I'm, I'm going to provide again to you tonight. It wasn't in the packet, but I think it would be good for you to have that in front of you tonight. Then on December 16th, there was some additional discussion of affordable housing options, but not specifically focused on South Riverside. And then prior to, or at last week's hearing on Nike Hill, Arch provided a memo on affordable housing options that again, that is included in tonight's packet. The memo for tonight's meeting referred to three general options and a joint study session with City Council on February 2nd, but that is, is now scheduled as a regular council study session on February 9th with participation by, by select Planning Commission members. And the focus of that section, session is going to be on clustering, but there may be some opportunity to, to address some affordable housing provisions associated with that. So we recommend deferring any further action until after the, the council study session, but we, but Arthur Sullivan from Arch is here to lead some further discussion on potential affordability provisions. So just to recap, we are recommending to expand the R 7200 rezone to the entire R 9600 area between the SSHO and I 405. We recommend not to expand the SSHO at this time, but to include it in for further study of senior housing citywide as part of the 2016 Housing Strategy Plan. If PC, if the Planning Commission concurs with the above, no further transportation analysis should be needed and, and we believe that we can rely on our critical areas ordinance to address landslide and other environmental issues. And then we recommend that you consider, continue to consider affordable housing provisions as part of the rezone, but defer a decision to February 17th, which would be the, the next hearing night. Now, the calendar in your packet shows a City Council study session on this issue for February 16th, but, but we recognize that we're not going to be ready for that. So we're instead suggesting continuing the hearing to February 17th. So with that, I'm going to pass out this, this comparison of affordability provisions in other jurisdictions and I'll leave it up to the commission if they would like to hear from Arthur now or get some public testimony first and then finish up.
Thanks, Dave. So with regards to affordable housing, we had a fairly robust discussion about this last time. We really appreciate it, Mr. Sullivan, and thank you for coming this evening. What, my recollection of the outcome that came out of that was that there was, I believe, unanimous support that we are going, or we're going to support recommending some type of affordability housing language to the code, to the code, the Bothell Municipal Code. So you, that is kind of in works. I don't, I didn't come prepared to ask any other further questions if there, and we don't have a full commission this evening, so I don't think we're really prepared to kind of make any further discussions on any language. Is there anything, you might come to the podium and then if there's anything that you would say since that last meeting that perhaps we should be thinking about? I don't think we're ready to make any kind of code language this evening. Commissioner Cecil.
I guess from our last discussion, the one thing I think we might be able to discuss is how, how would we go about implementing this? So not necessarily what the details of the affordable housing would be, but how do we, if we've got areas that we're rezoning, can we incorporate that? Is it mandatory incentive based? And how could we mesh that into a kind of a transition where it's fully implemented in the code?
Okay. Yeah. Maybe how you've seen implementation in other municipalities, that would be interesting.
So I totally concur with your statement, and I think mostly we wanted to be here tonight to not revisit what we did last week, but to reinforce some of your conversation and point out that the clustering conversation, that because of that, some of the same issues might apply here and mostly to reinforce the recommendation of staff of deferring until. You've had that conversation because if it applied to Nike Hill, it would probably even apply potentially more so here.
Right.
So, and to let you know, we have started working on some of the other zoning language in anticipation so we can move quickly.
Great.
So I think on that front, I'd almost be done there. Now, to your question, Commissioner Cecil, is the way we have done it and how we are preparing on drafting is that in other jurisdictions, some other jurisdictions, what has often happened is they have started with a provision because they are rezoning a specific area and we've written the code to work there and then a few years later, they come up with another area and we write for that area. And we've learned from that experience that what we're actually doing is preparing a two-part kind of way of presenting it. One, are provisions that we think would apply universally that are more administrative. And then the other is now for this neighborhood, let's focus on what's unique about this neighborhood and then refer back to the general language. So that way you can pick up different neighborhoods or develop a citywide approach over time, but you'd be able to start with a specific area right away. So that is an experience we've had with other cities and so we would write in the code to start with what you have it for, but we designed it so it'd be very easy to add in other areas. And when you see it in black and white, I think it'll be a little bit easier to explain.
So when you're talking about areas, are you talking about like comp plan subareas? Or are you talking about specific neighborhoods or specific zones? Or who knows?
It could be, it could be any of the above.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
Mr. Cabe?
I have a general question related to our docket. Looking at page two in the February calendar, it looks like the council's looking at the approval of the Arch work program and budget. Is there a chance that this isn't funded going forward? Seems like as of our last meeting, you asked us some specific questions. We gave you generalized feedback so you could start crafting up what our documentation might look like.
Right.
Is, is that a chance, David, that Arch wouldn't be able to follow through with that? Or Tom?
Why didn't you let me take that one? I think that that is something that we do on an annual basis and it's really just an affirmation of Bothell's participation in a consortium of cities that belong to Arch, shouldn't have any bearing on your recommendations for the subareas or your recommendations in the comprehensive plan overall.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So anyway, thank you very much for coming.
And if you have any questions, I'm here for the questions.
All right. Good. I, I, do we have any other questions?
Well, just.
Commissioner?
So Arthur, thanks for coming again. Oh, yes, sir. So thanks for coming again. So when you're saying, that was, that was a good question that you answered for Commissioner Cecil. So you said that, you know, it could be flexible so that you kind of move it around to different neighborhoods. I mean, from a city standpoint, from city staff, community development, does that get into, do we have to, does that set off notification processes where we have hearings or is that something that we can just put into the code? Or how does that work? Or does that set off a lot of other meetings like this, like four or five meetings to discuss the potential change?
Is it like a zoning or a redesignation?
Yes. It'd be a code amendment and, and potentially a plan amendment as well. So for individual reason, basically the approach we're, we're following at this point is that when we do an upzone, when we add, add value, I guess, to the, to the property, that that is a, an opportunity to apply some sort of affordability provision. And so, so that would be one mode that we would move forward to, to create affordability. So it wouldn't be necessarily subarea by subarea, but it could be rezone by, rezone area by rezone area. But I think what Arthur's saying is that in the longer term, the, we would develop a mechanism that would put some citywide affordable housing, basic provisions in, into there and then, and then it would, then the subarea plans could, could build on that.
Right. So we've had like some cities who've kind of addressed the whole city at once, or like in Redmond, they sort of created the basics and then with each subarea plan, it decided, is it going to apply in that subarea and if so, is there any variation from the basics that go to that subarea? So we're, we're either going to be linked, and so yes, there will be hearings and the question will, will it be linked to a very lane use issue, action that you're taking? Or would it be just this issue? And we've done it both ways and it just depends on how the issue's evolving in your community. Right now, you've got two rezones in front of you. So we would start it working from that and whether or not it grows. What we're saying is we'll draft it so it can evolve any way it wants into the future relatively with not having to rewrite code every time.
Right. Great. Thanks.
Mr. Cecil?
So David, the way this might work is that this would be part of the normal rezone process and the yearly comp plan amendment process that would go on the docket as part of a, perhaps a rezone like we're considering here. So it would just be part of that analysis, not a separate process?
It, it could be a separate item on the docket or at this point, if, if one or both of these rezone actions creates an affordability provision, we would, as part of that action, we would add that language into the citywide code as well as into the subarea. But, but then moving forward, we'd have that, that, that basic boilerplate in the citywide
So I think just to kind of sum it up, appreciate you being here. For those in the audience, anyone else that might be listening, as a, a kind of a general strategic direction, the Planning Commission is, is supportive so far of looking at adding an affordability, affordable housing element to the Bothell Municipal Code. We, I don't know how many of you may have been at our last meeting, but the discussion, as I recollect it, was there was around some specifics, but also we're interested in how other cities have implemented this that's of interest to us. At the same time, we recognize Bothell has uniqueness with regards to our geography and our values and how do we want to uniquely implement this that would meet our needs specifically. Also, how can we continue to let the market forces work? And yet this is, this is government action and impact on the market. And, and yet anything we do, when, when we change any type of designation, that's impacted on the market. So we're fleshing out all of those topics and we haven't come to any final conclusions, but we definitely are studying it and Arch is working with, as really as part of our staff to come up with some code ideas for us.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. At this point, this is, I think, the right time to open this up to the public. And this is not just with regards to affordable housing, but really anything with regards to the staff presentation that we just heard from regarding that, this particular subarea. So are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and speak? And if so, this is your time. Yes, sir. And if you could, just to start off, state your name and address for the record and.
Yeah. William Parcell.
And try to limit your comments to around three minutes, that would be.
Sure. William Parcell, 11321, East Riverside Drive. And I'm just to the east of the Furman properties and I just wanted to say that I'm for the rezoning to 7200 and, and I appreciate all your efforts on our behalf.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Apollo Furman, 11203, East Riverside Drive, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Although I've asked to delay the SSHO overlay discussion, given the letters regarding the emergency response times on East Riverside Drive and requests from the chairman to get the raw data in that regard, I feel it important to dispel the urban myth that East Riverside Drive does not have, does not receive sufficient emergency care. The city fire department is fabulous. I made a request for the documents to find the information on response time. They got it to me very quickly. They got me all the call information I requested from 2015. First of all, the Bothell Fire Department is not the only service that provides 911 call responses. You have all municipalities. You have Kirkland, you have Woodinville, Kenmore, but also private hospitals and private ambulance companies. So in addition to everything I'm saying, there is additional cover. But you can look at the information for yourself and if you want, I can email it to you. It's 4,000 lines of Excel spreadsheet, so lots of fun. During this time period, total city ambulance response calls were 3,346. Of those.
What was, excuse me, what was the time period?
It was 10 months. It's from January 1st, 2015 through October 31st last year.
All right.
I, my initial request was 12 months, but my request was prior to the end of the 12 months, so I shortened it. It was, I probably should have gone back, but anyway.
Okay.
Full of 12 months. So over that 10 month time period, 3,346 calls, this is the citywide. Of those, 354 ambulance calls were along East Riverside Drive. So 10 and a half percent. The city has a goal of arriving to a call in seven minutes. Out of the 3,346 response calls in the city, 541 arrived a little slower than that call. Of those 541 calls, how many roll on East Riverside Drive? 90%? 50%? Remember, 10% of all calls in the city happen along East Riverside Drive. I'll get to that in a second. No. 28 of the calls, 5% were along East Riverside Drive. In other words, far better than most, the rest of the city. In fact, considering the age of the seniors on East Riverside Drive, it would make sense that they would, as a population, have more calls. And they did. In our area, the East Riverside Drive corridor had 10 and a half percent of all emergency calls in the city. So if statistics would hold up, all the other analyses would probably put it about 10%, you know. You know, anything else, if 10% of the Sunday calls, 10% of the calls, just on averages. So if something's significantly higher than that, there's a problem. And if it's significantly lower, well, the converse is also true. Again, the data shows that only 5% of the calls in the city that took longer than the, the goal of seven minutes happened in this area. So we're actually one of the safest corridors in the entire city and I thank the Bothell Fire Department for that. This area is easier to access than the rest of the city. The corridor is one of the least likely to have response times beyond the goal the city has set. In short, the East Riverside corridor has better response times than much of the city. Even when accounting for the rush hour traffic, that anecdotally would make some think there might actually be a problem. But as you know, over the past couple of years of coming in, I always like bringing in actual statistics, looking at the raw data and then digging through it. That's what I do for a living. So looking at the real statistics, the facts, there is no statistically significant rationale to declare that there's a problem along this corridor for medical services. Just give you one example of some calls. June 25th, and the ambulance took over 24 minutes to respond to Beardsley Boulevard. If you think about that, where the fire department is, Beardsley Boulevard, even in my old age, I could probably throw a rock to Beardsley. You know, things happen. There are multiple calls at the same time. There might be a traffic accident, tree down, other things that play into these issues. But in closing, it is nice to know that I live on one of the safest parts of the city and that we have quicker service than most of the city, especially safe for all of the seniors. I sincerely appreciate the level of care that our fire and EMS providers and the 911 responders. Just want to point out, if anyone wants a job, there's a new 911 responder, City of Bothell. Give us for our tax dollars and that they are working so well for the citizens. It took a few days for the city to provide this information. And once I received the data, it only took a few minutes to realize the anecdotes surrounding the alleged poor service were false. I wish this information had been provided prior to either of the previous meetings on SSHO. Then we'd be discussing the policy based on the facts, not upon urban myths, anecdotes and false rumors. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Cecil.
Yes. Did, did you have a chance to talk to any of the folks there at fire and get a sense of why the perception is there? Even though the data?
I think it just, it stems from my perception. It's just from, you know, council meetings, we had people alleging, you know, the traffic. And it starts like any rumor you hear at once, and then it, it grows and grows and grows and it becomes truth until you actually look at the information. And you, you see it, I mean, we all seen it, the bottlenecks happen. And then you go and look at the calls. And just for example, of the 28 calls that were beyond seven minutes, only four of the ones that happened beyond seven minutes happened during rush hour. Others were at other times of day. Several were on the weekends, which traffic isn't a problem. There are other reasons. I mean, and you get, and again, seven minutes is the goal. There's no set in stone marker of anything. And if you go down in time, six minutes, five minutes, four minutes, the percentages remain the same. So.
Yeah, I'm just, I think we got that feedback from the fire chief, if I'm correct. So it would be good to, is that correct, Dave?
The memo was from the fire marshal.
Fire marshal?
And he didn't, he didn't make the case that there was poor service at East Riverside Drive. His case was that, given the challenges to serve that area, he didn't support expanding the SSHO and, and having more of this vulnerable population to serve there. So I, I'd be happy to look over this data and, and review it with the fire marshal and, and get back to it.
Yeah, I mean, numbers are numbers, that's for sure. Maybe, maybe he foresees something that, that we don't see that aren't in the numbers. I don't know. It'd be, it'd be interesting to try to connect that.
I'm just personally curious. I've been coming to these meetings for 18 years. And I never can recall a time when a fire marshal's been asked for anything on a rezone request. I think this is the first time in 18 years. It just, it gets interesting. I mean, that was, I don't know. And our request to have this looked at as the overall city is just, we look at it and think, absolutely, please, you know, city staff recommendation, go and look at it. And I believe that when you, when the whole city takes an idea and looks that, oh my gosh, over the next 10 years, we're going to have a 50% increase in seniors, we will need to provide more senior housing. And then we'll look at, okay, well, what do they need? Well, they need senior facilities, senior medical facilities, all these things that cost a couple million dollars or whatever it'll cost for the land and everything else. And we already have them, so we'll, we'll see that and it'll be a year or two or three down the road. But I mean, that's, it was just, it didn't take long for me to get the data. And I know the chairman asked for this, so, you know, I just dug in and got it.
I'm just following. I'd be interested in whatever format you want to put it in. I'd be interested in looking at the data.
Sure. I'll get it, I'll get your email after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cape.
Thanks for the statistics. I, I love them as much as you do.
I'd tear in and start Saturdays, Fridays, Tuesdays and holidays, 4th of July, whatever. I mean, yeah, anyway.
I don't live in that part of the city, so I don't have a good feel for the exact traffic times as far as which direction the main concern is. But it seemed like most people were having an issue with traffic coming into Bothell from Woodinville in the afternoon. And I don't want to spin you out into another month-long research project, but.
I got Saturday.
Is there any concern that it's not necessarily the time to get there? Because I'm thinking local 42, or the station 42 downtown, you're probably not going to run into much traffic going on the bridge to East Riverside Drive. Is the concern more, once you pick them up, getting to a hospital or getting out of East Riverside Drive? Or is that not the issue?
I don't believe so, because the, the biggest traffic issues are right at, either right at the four-way stop, the Cozy Corner Cafe. And then the other side, it's right at the senior center, depending on the time of day. And then the traffic goes up towards Cedar Park. But if you want to go to Evergreen or the hospitals, you continue on Riverside and go up Brickyard and go 124th. And those are clear as a bell any time of day. I mean, I, I live in that area and when I leave and come home, you know, rush hour, it's one or two cars max to get in and out. The traffic is going up to Cedar Park, so I don't, I haven't seen anything. But I think, I remember seeing, you know, like the traffic when they, the last time I saw the traffic analysis, you know, they put little rubber things across the road and check the cars. The traffic difference between East Riverside Drive, I think it's 112th that goes up to Cedar Park. I don't remember the street, but the difference was a couple thousand car difference between the rest of the stretch. And that's the stretch that takes you up and out to the hospitals is going that way. So it's, it's more that bottleneck getting in or out right in the downtown. And then once you get there, it's, you know, I mean, that'd be another thing to look at. But then again, we'll be looking at it all in a couple of years, so.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that. But your, the data you presented tonight was really enlightening, so thank you.
And I'll, free to email it to you if you want. I got you.
Thanks, Mr. Furman.
You bet. No problem.
And if you could email that to me, I'd be happy to distribute it to the planning, full planning commission.
Anybody else? All right. Yes, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Albright. Address is 1060775th Street Northeast, or Northeast 175th Street. And I have a question in regards to the affordable housing component. Does the planning commission know what percentage of housing in the area is affordable housing now?
I don't think we have a number on that, really. Yeah, I think that's part of, many municipalities have, have done a much more thorough both investigation of their current level of affordable housing as well as their strategy going forward. That's something we, we're, we need to do right now. So I don't believe we have a number. Would Arthur be able to address that? Do you, do you know whether Bothell, any type of statistics around Bothell's level of affordable housing now? You'd have to, I, I, I don't know how you'd get that data.
So we do have data that was collected as part of your comprehensive plan update, similar to other cities, so we can compare. And so we do have information citywide, whether or not in particular neighborhoods, more information is wanted. That's something we can potentially look into. You know, we can look at census track levels and things like that. But no, we do have information for you on that front as part of the overall needs analysis. We can take that a little bit further as needed.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking the question is across from our property, I don't know if you gentlemen are familiar with 175th, Northeast 175th Street. Across from our property, there are two apartment buildings that have a fairly significant population of what appears to be low-income housing. I don't know what the rents are in those buildings, but based on the appearance of the buildings and the vehicles of the tenants, I would say that it's probably low-income housing. So that'd be interesting to know what the percentage in that area is on that and what the goals of the city are.
Okay. Well, we, we definitely are doing further research into what we currently have as well as the type of code changes we want to have for the future.
Okay. Very good.
I, I would say that the, the concepts and the approaches we've been talking about so far with Arthur have been more on the lines of percentages of new developments that, that are required to be, you know, for instance, maybe 10% of a new development might, might be required to be affordable housing. So if you had a 10-lot plat or something like that, you would have, one of those houses would be integrated in with the, the rest of the neighborhood. So I don't think we're talking about, you know, projects necessarily where they're, where they're all affordable. So if that helps you at all.
No, sure. Okay, thank you. Last comment, I am in favor of the rezone.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lori Blough Marshall and we are part owner of a property at 105 through 3, Northeast 175th. I had just a couple logistical questions because I'm, we came a little late to the discussion, so I'm unsure of timelines for things. So I keep hearing, you know, we're going to defer that discussion and we're going to defer that discussion. And I, I'm getting a little worried. Is there a, an end date? Is there like a, a day of decision-making for this?
For affordable housing?
No, for the rezone and, and which may or may not include affordable housing. I couldn't quite tell from that. So.
We, well, we haven't established an actual date for where, when we're going to vote on what our recommendation will be. And there's several reasons for that. We've, as you can tell, we've, there's become greater, greater and greater kind of things we're looking at. It's not, we're not delaying for delaying's sake, but for example.
No, I get that.
There's been concern around traffic. There's been concern around emergency response.
Right.
And we've also had a discussion as to, we have, we have a large concentration of senior housing in this part of our city. Is strategically, is that something we want to grow? Or are there other parts of our city that we want to encourage senior housing to happen in? In addition to that, there's a new ordinance that we're examining right now called clustering.
And that's another question I had.
Right, which actually is pertaining to another parcel in the city. But it could play in here in terms of what we might recommend even here. And so rather than make a, we're definitely not making a hasty decision, but I don't think we're making, I think our delays make sense. And so I don't want you to feel like we're delaying for any reason. But I, I would say, I, I don't know if I can give you an actual date, but I would say sometime in the first quarter, which would be probably before the end of March, I think the planning commission will be ready to make a recommendation on this, if that helps. Mr. Cape.
Yeah, one follow-up. I think the Furmans would agree that they're probably tired of delay. They've been here for a year now, as we've been talking about these certain areas. But we did take action on their specific property, which was the initial rezone request.
Exactly.
Then it was kicked back to us by city council to take a look at the whole area. So it's coming back to us for a second time through. So, yeah, we apologize stringing this along. We would like to take as, action as much as you would, but.
I think we only were in on it since the second time because we were at the last meeting, but I don't, I don't remember here, but. Okay, so that, I was just, it was, you know, I was getting a little like, what? Deferral, deferral? How long does it last? I don't know. I currently have a residence in Shoreline and we just got a huge rezoning thing, which is kind of a big issue there. And one of the concerns is, you know, with the impact of rezoning. However, I went to a planning mission, commission meeting there as well. And what they are doing is implementing a 100-year plan. So like a lot of the concerns that people have actually won't occur for many years to come. And so I'm kind of wondering, somebody said something about 50 years. I don't know. I can't remember what it was. But I, I'm just wondering, you know, are, are a lot of these concerns immediate or for the future that you're talking about?
You mean the, the various things that we're looking at as far as?
I assume, you know, you're not going to change the zoning and then phew, 100 things pop up, right? So things like the fire department response time and questions like that. There's, there will be time to implement things as, as you go.
Yes.
And as, as needed.
Yes. And so, you know, I can't speak to what any other city.
I'm in favor of the rezoning. I'm just wondering how much we're kind of putting the danger at that.
I can't speak to what any other planning commission in another municipality might do, but I don't see us making 100-year decisions here.
I didn't either. I got to tell you.
On the other hand, a zoning change is not something that's made every year or two years. We do, we just worked on a, a comprehensive plan update where we strategically set forth for each sub area in, basically neighborhood in the city, what a six-year vision looks like. So we do try to take at least a six-year look at a neighborhood and during that time, look at zoning changes in that. So I would say that we're going to make a, make a recommendation here that will have some staying power for, I'm going to say at least five to six years. But you just, you know, you, you never know what comes along and then it makes sense for us to look at it again. It's possible.
Okay. I, I just was concerned about some impacts not really being applicable anytime soon. Does that make, do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah.
You're saying the things that we're looking at are not applicable now.
The ones we're worried about are not going to be applicable for quite some time.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think that the things that we're focusing on are applicable to even something for this year.
Oh, wow.
And even for this quarter. So they are, they are playing into the decisions that we make.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. So, yeah. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Cool. And I was asked to say that, an informal poll of the neighborhood said everyone's in favor of rezoning.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Dave, will there be another public hearing on this? Is this a continuation to the meeting?
Yes, yes. We would continue to February 17th. My, unless a lot of new twists come up, I think that, that it's possible that the commission would be ready to, to act then, make a recommendation at that point.
Yeah, so.
That's our plan.
For all of you here and any, any others that are listening on television, so keep February 17th in mind as kind of potential decision-making point on this particular item. Please come back at that time. We will have, at that point, at least had our study session with regards to clustering that may or may not impact what we recommend. And so keep that in mind and put that on your calendars to come back. So I think right now, let's have a motion to continue the public hearing. Correct?
Unless, if there's any direction that the commission would like to give to staff in terms of preparing for that next one.
To continue, is there any, why don't we just deliberate a little bit here? So is there any comments with regards to what's, what staff has presented, what we've heard from the public with regards to how kind of we're thinking right now? So maybe I'll start with you, Commissioner Vleat.
Yeah, thanks again to the public for coming out. You guys have been to a lot of meetings, I know, especially the Furmans. And it was, the last speaker, it was, it was nice to hear your comments because it is a long process. I guess it's that we're talking about, you know, 70 acres in the heart of Bothell. Essentially, nothing's ever been built on it. There are a few houses scattered around, but it could be a significant change to the town. And so we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And it does look like we're getting kind of close to a conclusion about that. And it does seem to kind of fit in with the, with the joint meeting that we're going to have with regards, with, with the council with regards to clustering. I think I would pull the page, but there's a large portion of the property in discussion that's a critical area. These critical, some type of clustering provision might be able to benefit landowners, property owners in that area with regards to this possible rezone. I'm glad we're continuing to the 17th. I wouldn't be ready to make a, well, there's a couple commissioners who aren't here tonight either. I'd like to hear their take on it. It just because of the size of the property. And I am looking forward to hearing how the discussion goes and what we can take forward and with regards to affordable housing component. Because it, and one of the, it was, it was a person came and spoke a little while ago about the affordable housing and some of the apartments that are kind of, have been there for, you know, 40 years, 50, which is a lot of, I think what a lot of people can talk about affordable housing and they think about it. It's kind of maybe an eyesore. It's kind of falling in on itself. I guess what I kind of like about. I guess what I kind of like about the, the idea or the possibility of, of putting in a, um, requirement for affordable housing is that you get some new nicer units, um, and it's not just this, this one big unit where, you know, basically have a developer or, or a property owner who doesn't take care of it, and I think that wouldn't be the case in the direction we're gonna take it. So, but, but thanks everybody for coming, that's all I have for, for, for now.
Commissioner Cecil.
Um, I've been pleased as well in this last series of meetings here, um, all the, the feedback we've got from the public. So thank you, everyone, for coming and expressing your point of view and, and filling us in on some of the gaps that we may have in, in your specific neighborhood. And so, that's been really good. In my mind, uh, you know, I, I'm, it's, you know, the rezon seems like a really, it seems like everybody's, uh, kind of on the same page. Uh, it seems like the, the missing pieces here are, you know, basically the affordability piece, I think, and the clustering piece. And so, um, you know, in the next couple of weeks, we will have had some conversations with council, and I think have a, a little firmer understanding of how that may affect or incorporate with our, with our decision here. And, um, yeah, I'm hopeful that February will be a good, uh, information gathering time for us, and hopefully we can come to some conclusions there. Yeah, again, I, I guess for me, on the affordable housing, um, just getting a grasp on how that would be phased in i- is really kind of, uh, my question, and I, I, you know, we got some high-level stuff, I think, from, from ARC today, but, uh, that's kind of where my mind is, trying to roll that out and how that will work, so. But I'm, I'm, uh, actually very excited about that, so, thank you.
Mr. Cape?
Yeah, I too would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Our meetings are very boring when no one shows up, so we appreciate you guys' feedback. I hate deferring on items, and I'd like to take action tonight, but I think we have a few balls in the air that we have to settle before we can, um, make a change in this area. One thing I'd like to know, I guess moving forward, is just a timeline, um, Commissioner Cecil brought up today, how we would implement it into the code and how this would take place. I don't think we want to hold this up for years in order to get the affordable element in front of it, but at the same time, we have two big zoning issues going on in the city right now. The net difference in houses between seventy-two-hundred and ninety-six-hundred isn't a huge, huge difference, but, um, I think we do need to have a affordability element in place, or at least have an understanding where our city is going. Like I said, if that's gonna take two years, I don't really want to wait on the, these properties for that to take place. But, uh, I think in the next few weeks, month or two, we should have a better feeling on when we can get that wrapped up. So I'm, I'm in favor of deferring to February seventeenth.
Right, thank you. Uh, I too appreciate all of you coming. I have, uh, I wrote down five things that were on my mind as we've talked, talked about this this evening, as well as in previous meetings. The first one was critical areas, there's been a lot of, um, discussion with concern, as we all should, with regards to these steep slopes, a lot of water that flows through there. There have been some previous housing developments where they did not, we did not have as robust of critical areas, and I'm very familiar with some of these homes that have significant water problems, both behind their house, even underneath their house, where it, we, we just did not do the right kind of job with regards to managing critical areas. That's old news, and I really feel confident that our current critical areas ordinance, um, is not gonna ha- have a repeat of that as we look for at future development. My second concern was traffic, and I wanted to see data, there is a lot of anecdotal. I have it myself with regards to the intersections, uh, on both sides of the bridge. And, uh, but I wanted to see actual data, um, and, and I think the key thing was the impact from any increased housing that would be put in there as a result of a rezon. And I'm really coming around to the fact, that at least the data appears to be that it's pretty minimal. And that there is a backup, but it's from flow-through from other parts of the city, probably even from outside the city of Bothell. My next issue was emergency response, and, uh, we did hear from one of the, uh, public testimonial, testimonials tonight, uh, with some good information on that. But I wanted to make sure that we were not adding any additional risk to our emergency response by adding additional capacity and additional demand. Two new things that have kind of come up over the last sixty days have been affordable, an affordable housing element that we're actually looking at in another part of the city that could play into what we recommend here. So that, to me, makes sense, I think we're gonna have a pretty good direction of where the city council thinks we should be going by early February, so that by February seventeenth, we, I think we'll be ready to make a recommendation. And then the last, uh, thing I wrote down was clustering. So clustering is, I'm not gonna go into all of it, but it's this, it's a different concept of how, um, in, as you develop a particular parcel, you could leave a lot of it natural, untouched, which I think meets kind of Bothell's values, but also concentrate maybe even a smaller footprint product in certain areas that would make the product, make the property more valuable, but increase the likelihood of more affordable housing. Not guaranteed, but increase the likelihood of it. And so I think clustering, uh, potentially could be a really interesting additional, uh, recommendation that we make here. So, um, I, I also support, um, a delay on this to February seventeenth. So is there a motion to continue the public hearing to February seventeenth?
Motion to continue the, uh, public hearing on the South Riverside Plan and Code Amendment updates to February seventeenth.
Second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We do not have any other, uh, items on our agenda, no study session that I'm aware of. There is this upcoming study, study session that we've referenced that will be on-
February ninth.
February ninth. And we made, uh, some decisions as to how we will participate in that, and Dave, you're gonna get back to us if there's any type of public notice that needs to be made. Any reports, no old business, is there any old business, any reports from staff?
Uh, I have no reports from staff, but I just, I do want to clarify that the study session on the ninth is a city council study session with, with, uh, um, participation, uh, from-
By the planning commission.
Planning commission.
Thank you. Um, reports from members. Uh, just before we adjourn, just to clarify, our next meeting is actually set for February third, in which we will be continuing the public hearing on the Nike Hill Plan and Code Amendment, for anyone who's interested in that. And with this point, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.